Good evening. Before we begin our meeting this evening, Emma Loper, an eighth grade student at Albert Cammon Middle School, would like to offer a moment of reflection, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. John Smith. Please stand.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, the God in visible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Emma, for that moment of reflection. And also, congratulations to Emma for being selected Student of the Year for our middle school, at Albert Cammon Middle School. And best wishes to you during your eighth grade year at Cammon. This meeting of the Board of St. Charles Parish Public Schools for Wednesday, October 24, 2018, is called to order. Good evening and welcome. Madam Secretary, please note for the record that all Board members are present. Also in attendance this evening is Superintendent Felicia Gomez-Walker, along with the Executive Secretary for the Board and Superintendent Mrs. Shelley Babino. We have a number of resolutions and proclamations. The first resolution is Item 2.01, Resolution in Memory of Ms. Jeanette D. Ray. And I ask Mr. Sonny Savoie if you would present that resolution.
Thank you, Mr. President. A resolution in memory of Ms. Jeanette D. Ray. Whereas Jeanette D. Ray served as a secretary for 15 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Jeanette D. Ray its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the October 24, 2018 Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mrs. Ray's family, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savoie, second, and by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. And motion passes by unanimous vote. Item 2.02, Resolution in Memory of Mr. Alfred Green. Mr. John Smith, would you present that resolution?
I'll be happy to, Mr. President. Whereas Alfred Green served as a teacher for 17 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and whereas Alfred Green served as an administrator for six years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and whereas Alfred Green served as a school board member for 16 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and whereas Alfred Green served a total of 39 years in the St. Charles Parish Public School System, and be it resolved that St. Charles Parish School Board herein expresses to the family of the late Alfred Green its sincere sympathy in this their time of sorrow, and be it further resolved that a page in the October 24, 2018 Minute Book be set aside for the sole purpose of inscribing thereon this resolution, and that a copy of this resolution be presented to Mr. Green's family. I so move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Smith, second, and by Mr. Savoie. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. And that motion passes also by unanimous vote. We'll now present the resolution to the family of Mr. Green. Item 2.03, National School Lunch Week Proclamation. Mr. Robichaud, would you present that proclamation?
My pleasure, Mr. President. Whereas the National School Lunch Program has served our nation admirably for over 60 years through advanced practices and nutrition education, and whereas the National School Lunch Program is dedicated to the health and well-being of our nation's children, and whereas the National School Lunch Program has been joined through the years by many other excellent child-feeding programs, and there is evidence of continued need for nutrition, education, and awareness of the value of school nutrition programs, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the St. Charles Parish School Board, proclaim the week of October 22 through 26, 2018, as the dates to observe National School Lunch Week, and we encourage all residents to become aware and concerned about their children's and their own nutritional habits in hope of achieving a more healthful citizenry for today and the future, and I move for its adoption.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Robichaud, second, and by Mr. Nakhan. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. President. As we continue to reduce the barriers to students' success, making sure that students are provided with healthy lunches and breakfasts is very critical for their success in our school system. So, I would like to introduce tonight our Director of Ancillary Services, Ms. Teresa Brown, to come up and acknowledge those that are in attendance for the Child Nutrition Program. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you, members of the Board, Superintendent Gomez-Walker. We have several people here tonight to be recognized for National School Lunch Week. So, we could ask them to please stand. We have many managers. We have our Director of Child Nutrition. We have some technicians here. So, we thank you for your commitment and your passion to serving our kids in St. Charles Parish Public Schools each and every day. I appreciate your dedication. Thank you very much.
If there's no further discussion, please cast your vote. We'll do it by voice vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Item 2.04, National School Bus Safety Week Proclamation. Mr. Alexander, would you present that proclamation?
Mr. Sufferin, I'd be delighted. The National School Bus Safety Week Proclamation. Whereas St. Charles Parish School Bus Operators are a vital part of the St. Charles Parish Public School System, traveling more than a million and a half miles each year as they transport more than 8,500 students each day to and from school and school sanctioned activities. And whereas St. Charles Parish School Bus Operators are committed to professional development and training to improve their knowledge and skills into a comprehensive program of public awareness, continuing education, and advocacy for better traffic and road conditions as a way to ensure the safety and well-being of students and other drivers who share the district's roadways with school buses. And whereas more than 160 Transportation Department employees, including operators, dispatches, trainers, technicians, and support staff involved in the transportation program have compiled an outstanding safety record in Louisiana. And whereas this week of October 22 through 26, 2018, is National School Bus Safety Week throughout the nation in recognition of the contribution operators and other school transportation staff make to the nation's public education system, it is fitting that we set aside a special time to commend these dedicated employees. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board supports the goals and ideals of National School Bus Safety Week and encourages all citizens to recognize St. Charles Parish School Bus Operators and Support Staff for the services they provide, and I move for adoption of this proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Alexander, second, and by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion? Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to commend the dedicated bus drivers that transport our students to and from school every day. Transporting 8,500 students, 85% of our student body, is just an incredible task. And I'd just like to thank and commend our bus operators. I'd also like to invite, once again, Teresa Brown, our Director of Ancillary Services, to come up and acknowledge those that are here. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, members of the Board and Superintendent. I would like to ask our members of transportation team to please stand. We certainly do appreciate your commitment and your dedication to ensuring our 8,500-plus students may get to and from school safely into all of their events that you all travel to and from. So, thank you for everything that you do. Thank you.
Okay, please cast your vote. That motion passes with all eight Board members voting in favor. The next item is Item 2.05, 2018 Red Ribbon Week Proclamation. And I would ask Mr. Nakhan if you would present that proclamation, please.
I'd be happy to, Mr. President. Red Ribbon Week Proclamation. Whereas all children in St. Charles Parish are entitled to attend a school free of drugs and violence, and whereas we are committed to nurturing the full potential of St. Charles Parish youths, and whereas Department of Education statewide drug-free schools and committee personnel believe in and strive for a school environment free of drugs and violence, and whereas all citizens of St. Charles Parish join with the teachers, administrators, and parish and state officials in encouraging our youth to become productive citizens and to maintain healthy lifestyles. Now therefore be it resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board does hereby support October 23 through the 31, 2018, as Red Ribbon Week and encourages its school officials to participate in drug awareness activities and be strongly committed to drug-free, healthy lifestyles. And be it further resolved that the St. Charles Parish School Board encourages all of students in St. Charles Parish to pledge to "Life is your journey; travel drug-free." And I move for the approval of this proclamation.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, second, and by Mr. Robichaud. Any discussion? Madam Superintendent?
Yes, while Red Ribbon Week is quite a tongue-twister, it has tremendous significance in our fight against drugs. I'd like to invite our Executive Director of Student Services, Ms. Jerry Smith, to share some information with us. Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Good evening, and thank you, Board members and superintendent, for accepting the 2018 Red Ribbon Week Proclamation. I would like to read a brief history and just make a couple additional remarks. As a response to the murder of Enrique Kiki Camarena on February 7, 1985, the First Red Ribbon Week took place in 1988 as an eight-day celebration proclaimed by the Congress of the United States. Camarena was a 37-year-old Drug Enforcement Administration undercover agent. No other single-drug prevention movement in history has impacted as many lives in such a positive way. Unfortunately, and most currently in the United States right now, we are in the midst of an opioid epidemic, seeing a shocking increase in overdoses and deaths from these highly addictive substances. In 2015, 58% of 12th grade students in the United States reported trying the deadly opioid Heron. It is estimated that 3.8 million Americans ages 12 and older are currently misusing prescription opioids. Subsequently, Red Ribbon Week campaigns are being used to introduce students to the widespread and destructive crisis that we are in the midst of, as well as the impact of opioids on their bodies. So, again, I thank you for accepting the proclamation and would like to give each of you a glow bracelet.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any other discussion on this item? Please cast your vote. And that motion passes by unanimous vote. Item 2.06, National Principals Month Proclamation. Mrs. Bernard, would you present that proclamation, please?
It would be my honor, Mr. President. National Principals Month Proclamation. Whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board has declared the month of October 2018 as National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the U.S. Congress to designate National Principals Month and resolutions thereof. And whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analyst, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board honors such exemplary elementary and secondary-level public school leaders committed to serving students from pre-kindergarten to grade 12 in their profession. And whereas the St. Charles Parish School Board recognizes outstanding elementary, middle, and high school principals who have succeeded in providing high-quality learning opportunities for students, as well as their exemplary contributions to the profession. And whereas the honor, excuse me, and whereas to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals at all grade levels in ensuring that every child has access to a high-quality education. Now therefore be it resolved that in honor of the service of all elementary, middle-level, and high school principals, and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education, and to celebrate school leader accomplishments, the month of October 2018 is hereby designated in St. Charles Parish to be National Principals Month. I move approval of this proclamation.
I'll second. We have a motion by Mrs. Bernard, second, and by Mr. Nakhan. Any discussion? Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, this proclamation reminds us of the many hats that principals wear. Just listening to that made me tired, and I bet it does you too. But let's make sure that we all understand the importance of a great principal at the schools. And we have some fabulous principals at our schools. They are the foundation of the success that we experience at the schools. So, thank you so much for being here tonight, adding that one more thing on your plate. I'm going to ask the Executive Director of Elementary Schools, Ms. Erin Gragnier, and the Executive Director of Secondary Schools, Mr. Ken Ortling, to please join us here and also introduce the principals.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent, members of the Board. It's our distinct pleasure to recognize our outstanding principals here tonight. When we call your name, please stand to be recognized. From Destrean High School, Mr. Jason Maudair. From Honville High School, Mr. Brian Loumar. From R.K. Smith Middle School, Mr. Harold Blood. From Albert Cammon Middle School, Ms. Tamika Green. From Harry Hurst Middle School, Dr. David Scheck Snyder. From Allemans Elementary School, Ms. Lisa Perrin. From New Sarpy Elementary School, Ms. Claire Broniger. From Mimosa Park Elementary School, Michelle DeBruyier. From St. Rose Elementary School, Ms. Shonda Harris. From Luling Elementary School, Mr. Sam Bueller. From Norco Elementary School, Ms. Becky Weber. From Lakewood Elementary School, Ms. Kelly Ortling. From RJ Viall Elementary School, Ms. Angel Babin. And from Ethel Scheffner Elementary School, Ms. Vanessa Terry. Thank you.
Thank you for that introduction and the opportunity to applaud each of you individually. It is so deserving.
Any further discussion on this item before you go ahead and cast your vote then? And that motion passes by unanimous vote as well. The next item is Item 3.01, St. Charles Parish Public Schools Foundation Grant Recognition. The St. Charles Parish, the St. Charles Public Schools Foundation is awarding one-time grants to teachers in the school system. The grants are funded by the St. Charles Public Schools Foundation, United Way of St. Charles, Bayer formerly Monsanto, Valero, and Shell. Grants are managed by the St. Charles Public Schools Foundation. Grants were evaluated by their impact at the point of instruction and were chosen by an independent committee comprised of various public education stakeholders. Ms. Debbie Sufferin, President of the St. Charles Public Schools Foundation, will recognize the recipients of the grants and the Foundation Board members in attendance this evening. Ms. Sufferin?
Thank you, Board members and Superintendent. Thank you, Mr. Sufferin, for that great introduction. We are, as you all know that I am Debbie Sufferin. I am President of the St. Charles Public School Foundation. We are 501(c)(3), and we are nonprofit. We enhance public education by funding and supporting teachers' high-quality initiatives, therefore directly impacting our children's education, our communities' future. We aim to ensure that every teacher and student has the tools he or she needs to succeed in school and in life, because if they succeed, we succeed. I wish I, we hold fundraisers, we take donations, and we write grants to fund teachers' initiative. This year, we are giving away over $72,000. So, it's time for me to show you the money, okay? All right. One of our first grants was the Narco Community Grant Fund, where all the money went directly to the Narco community. $4,000 went to the school, and $1,000 went to the elderly. That was one of our first grants. Another grant we have is from Monsanto slash Bayer, because in the meantime, they sent us a Monsanto check, but they changed their name to Bayer. So, I want to give them recognition. And this grant was written to fund Chromebooks. I would like for you to come up when I call your name. We're going to take up and remain standing so we can take a picture. My little elves over here are going to give you a check, okay? First name we have is Lauren Bodie from New Sarpy Elementary. You can go on, go on further. Mary Earls from Harry Hurst. Melinda Rapalay. Erin Chisholm. And Wendy Rodrigg from Honville High School. Stephanie Knight from Allemans Elementary. Tanya Turgen from Allemans Elementary. Elizabeth Keller from St. Rose Elementary. And Amanda Mear from St. Rose. Melissa Gallagher from Mimosa Park Elementary. And Laquita Butler from Allemans Elementary. Come on up and get your checks, please. There you go. Blue tape to blue tape. Let's give them a big round of applause. United Way of St. Charles funded $25,000, and Shell-Narco gave us $2,400 to the foundation. $15,000 of that went to teacher grants. $15,000 of that went to teacher grants. $10,000 is going to pop-ups in our community, which are things in the school that would like to be funded. Let's say a guest speaker, or some activity that a principal would need. We automatically would, they talk, they send in their information, and we fund that. But right now is the teacher grants, over $15,000. When I call your name, please come up, receive your money, and stay up front so we can take a picture. These grants are up to $1,000 each to fund their project. The first person is Renee Angel from RJ Viall. Donna Reyes and Kristi Brown from RJ Viall. Wayland Johnson from Luling Elementary. Sharon Gregson from Luling Elementary. Jennifer Saladano from Luling Elementary. Carla Scott from Luling Elementary. Dana Dufren and Dottie Watson from Luling Elementary. Tiffany Scott from Luling Elementary. Jennifer Green from R.K. Smith. Jamal Martin. Jennifer Green and Trina Douglas from R.K. Smith. Delbert Johnson from R.K. And ACM. Albert Cammon. There you go. Didn't, didn't get my head. Julie Rexford from Harry Hurst. Karen Nago and Lauren Wagisback. They wrote it as a group called the STEM Club. That's a good one. Lori Hackman and Natalie Campo from Mimosa Park. Holly Mew from Mimosa Park. Carlos Mayoral from Satellite Center. Shelley Abear from Allamans Elementary. Kristen Tab from St. Rose. Joshua Lyncham from J.B. Morton. And those are our teacher grants. Can y'all push in to get the blue, the blue on? Our next grant was from Valero of St. Charles. $30,000 in teacher, in classroom promethium boards. We would like for you to come up. We obviously do not have the promethium boards here for you. We're going to have them installed. We do have a little letter for you to read, and I'd like you to be recognized. The names are, from New Sarpy, Simone Grayard. Nicole Royer. Jenny Campbell. And Marion Clement. Mimosa Park. Megan Sinak. Shelley Abear. Lori Hackman. And Jennifer Dugas. And Norco Elementary, Jill Simon. Amy McNulty. Michelle Wagner. And I'd like y'all to know that Joette Sermon is the one that writes all our grants for us. Carmen is the one that is the person that looks at all the grants and decides where the money, gets a group together and organizes it. And I'd like our, we'll second get our treasurer stand up. And our treasurer's the one that writes those checks for y'all. I'd like to thank all of them very much. You got everybody's stuff? They did an outstanding job, just like y'all did, by asking for all this stuff. And by the way, principals, since you're all here, we're planning on getting over $100,000 next year, so just send me your requests, and we'll see what we can do.
Thank you, Ms. Suffren, and thank you to the foundation for the great work that you're doing. Mr. Nakken, did you have a?
Yeah, I'd like to take a minute and give credit where credit is due, and let the public know that three years ago, the foundation gave $9,000, probably $9,000 in grants to teachers and schools. Last year, it was $17,000. And with the leadership that Ms. Suffren and her board has put together and their diligence, now we're up to $72,000 and shooting for $100,000. So, Ms. Suffren, board, foundation, congratulations. Thank you for the hard work, and, you know, for what you're doing for the children.
Item 3.02, Board and Superintendents' Recognition. On behalf of the school board, congratulations to the students and the employees and the teams that will be recognized here this evening. You truly bring distinction to St. Charles Parish Public Schools and really help to raise the bar for your classmates and your colleagues. So for that, we, the board, thanks you. At the conclusion of the recognitions, we'll take a short recess to allow those who would like to leave to do so.
Employees. Destrehan High School employee was named the 2018 Louisiana High School Counselor of Honville High School employee was awarded the 2018 SC Beck Rising Star Science Education Teams. Destrehan High School's Wildcat Robotics Team 3039 received a grant from Entergy Waterford
We'll take a short recess at this time. Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Have a good evening. Okay, we're back in session to cover the business items on the agenda, starting with Item 4.01, Minutes of the September 17, 2018 Committee Meetings, September 19, 2018 Board Meeting, and September 21, 2018 Board Retreat. I move approval of the minutes of all these meetings.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Robichaud, seconded by Mr. Nakken. Any discussion? That motion passes. Item 4.02 Personnel Items. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, October 22, 2018, and is aligned with Goal B of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the personnel items presented to the Board at Personnel and Committee Meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Savois, seconded by Mr. Nakken. Any discussion? And that motion passes by unanimous vote. Item 4.03 Behavioral Health Services for Students, Policy 1.24, First Reading. Due to the passage of Act 696 from the 2018 Louisiana Legislative Session, the creation of a new policy and procedures relative to the provision of behavioral health services for students during the school day is required. This agenda item was reviewed at the Personnel and Policy Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, October 22, 2018. Entertainer motion?
Mr. President, I move that we accept the Board Policy 1.24 Behavioral Health for Students for First Reading.
We have a motion by Mr. Nakken, seconded by Mrs. Bernard. Any discussion from the board? We do have two cards that have been turned in by citizens. The first card is from Ms. Kim Bazil. Ms. Bazil, would you come forward and to the podium, and if you could state your name and address? You have three minutes to present your comments.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you tonight and give you our story. We live at 42 Rose Down Drive in Destrehan, and we have a daughter at Ethel Scheffner. I'm here to ask that you amend the interim MOU for Behavioral Health Services to allow therapists in the classroom during instructional time and for an unlimited number of hours. Our daughter Caroline Grace is a beautiful 11-year-old who is bright, loving, and happy most of the time, and when she isn't, watch out. You see Caroline happens to be medically complex, coupled with autism, ADHD, PICA, which means she eats non-edible items, nonverbal, and seizure disorder. Her behaviors are many: hitting, screaming, sit-down strikes, refusing to move. She has between 15 and 30 hours of behavioral therapy a week. This is all medically approved. I used to have to pull Caroline out of school at noon three days a week for intense behavioral therapy at an ABA center in Metairie. On these days, we'd drive to Metairie, therapist would see her for three to four hours, and then we'd come home just in time for supper and dinner. On the days we didn't go to Metairie, the therapist would come to our home for three hours. We finally had to quit the center-based therapy. It was too much for a six-year-old. After seven years of behavioral therapy, we are just now able to go out in the community without a wheelchair. We are just now able to walk through a store for 10 minutes without a sit-down strike. Caroline is just now learning how to play with toys appropriately, not throwing them or eating them. All of this is because of the intense behavioral therapy she is receiving. We and families like us need this therapy for our children so they can continue to grow and mature and learn and live. Lastly, and I do not mean this adversarial at all, because this school system has been a godsend to my family, but I've been asking questions, specifically, who was on the committee to develop the MOU? And today I got the answer, and I was told staff developed the policies and procedures with the input of one student and their family through a pilot program. According to Policies and Procedures, Section 2.26 Board Committees, the President shall appoint membership, including laypersons. I was told we have 11% of the district of children that are developmentally disabled, but only one parent was asked their input. Additionally, per Section 2.28 Drafting of Board Policy, the Board Superintendent and Staff fully realize the need for continuous input from school, district personnel, students, and lay citizens. It is the intent of the Board that matters for consideration for adoption, as policies be given with wide exposure in order for the Board to receive suggestions from all segments of the district. We respectfully request that you amend this MOU. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bazil. We have another card also turned in from Ms. Mary Rhodey. Please state your name and your address, and again, you have three minutes as well.
Yes, my name is Mary Rhodey, and I live at 41 Belgrove Drive in Destrehan. Like I said, my name is Mary Rhodey, and I'm a board-certified behavior analyst, and I live in St. Charles Parish, and I work in private schools in this parish, as well as public schools in Jefferson and Orleans Parish. As a BCBA, my job in the classroom is not to take the place of a teacher or paraprofessional. It's not my job. My job is to teach a child how to communicate, how to engage in social interactions with peers and adults, learning coping mechanisms, and increasing socially significant behaviors. When a child is engaging in maladaptive behaviors that are impairing his or her ability to learn, it's my job to develop a strategy that will replace the undesirable behaviors with an appropriate alternative. Currently, ABA is, is one of the only empirically validated interventions for individuals with autism. This is because we use science and data in order to increase individualized treatment plans for each child. I would ask that you amend the interim MOU for Behavioral Health Services so that behavioral health providers, such as myself, are able to deliver services based on the child's needs. It is difficult to imagine a child for whom 90 minutes a week of ABA services would be clinically appropriate or even recommended. Our ultimate goal is to no longer be needed in the classroom. Like I always say, is my job is to work myself out of a job, to teach the child the skills that they need in order to attend school without the support of an ABA therapist. Thank you so much for your time and commitment to our children.
Thank you, Ms. Rhodey. Any further discussion on this item? I would just comment that this is the first reading. The second reading will be scheduled for November, for our November Board Meeting. That motion passes. Item 4.04 Requests for Proposals Internet Access and Wide Area Network Connection. Eligibility for E-Rate Funding is contingent upon completion of the formal Request for Proposals process within application timelines. Proposals will be sought for Internet Access and Wide Area Network Connection services. These services will enable the district to provide Internet access to all sites in order to facilitate business functionality and to provide web-based instructional and administrative resources that support teaching and learning. E-Rate funding, if attained, will significantly reduce the cost of these services to the district. This item was reviewed at the Technology Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, October 22, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan. Move approval?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Okuan, seconded by Mr. Savois. Any discussion? Please cast your vote. That motion passes. Item 4.05 Accounts Payable for the Month of September 2018. Invoices and other financial obligations of the school district are customarily paid weekly. Requests for approval of these transactions is normally made to the Board monthly. The Board must approve expenditures of public funds under its jurisdiction. This agenda item was reviewed at the Finance and Audit Committee Meeting of the Board on Monday, October 22, 2018, and is aligned with Goal C of the Board's strategic plan.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the accounts payable for the month of September 2018 as presented. That total is $3,599,262.88.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Nakhan, seconded by Ms. Savoy. Any discussion? That motion passes. Closing items. Item 5.01 Standing Committee Reports. Any Chair of a Standing Committee may present a report at this time.
Mr. President, Captain Approvance Committee met this past Monday, and we had one item, which was committee meeting only. That item was an update on our Dr. Rodney LeFond Performing Arts Center. Everything is, at this time, is on schedule for completion with an announcement of the final grant opening to come at a later date. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Nakhan.
Mr. President, the Policy and Personnel Committee met Monday, discussed two items. 4.02 was Personnel Policy, presented by Ms. Teresa Weber, and also 4.03, which is Behavioral Health Services for Students and the Dozer Procedures, for its first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Savoy.
Mr. President, the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Committee met on Monday, October 22. We had three items on our agenda for committee meeting only. The first was the Head Start Competitive Grant Application Presentation by Dr. Abden and Dr. Odinger. Next, we had an arts programming update from Ms. Jenny Medina-Hamilton. And last, we had an update on the release of district and school performance scores by Mr. A.J. Pathé. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bernard. Appreciate it. Technology Committee?
Technology Committee met, and we had a RFP for Internet Access and Wide Area Network Connection, and that was brought to the Board table tonight and approved.
Thank you, Mr. O'Quinn. The Finance and Audit Committee also met on Monday, October 22, and we covered two items. One of those items came to the full Board during this meeting and was approved, and that was the accounts payable for the month of September 2018. The other item was Ms. Teresa Brown, Administrator of Ancillary Services, presented information to the committee regarding the USDA Southeast Commodities Process and Cooperative Agreement that we have. That brings us to item 5.02 Superintendent's Report. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, the Board and public will be presented with an overview of the school system's quality profile. This document accurately provides information that matters most to our community. The profile includes data and information aligned with the Board's strategic plan and represents our community-based accountability system. To provide a snapshot of the quality profile is Director of Public Information, Stevie
Thank you, Superintendent Gomez-Walker, and good evening, Board members. As the superintendent mentioned, the 2018 Quality Profile is a complete and transparent report of how the school system is performing in areas that matter most to our community. And with the increased competition the school system faces in today's times, it is important that we do market ourselves and provide a document that can serve as a single point of reference with accurate information for our stakeholders. The Quality Profile contains data and information centered around aspects of our high-quality AAA school system incorporating academics, athletics, and the arts. Throughout the document, you will notice that the information is shared in infographics for increased visuals with easy reference. While the document is 32 pages in its entirety, I'd like to share with the public just a few pages from the Quality Profile and also mention how you can access the full report. The Quality Profile is organized to include information aligned with the Board's strategic plan. The school system is in Phase 8 of this plan, and the plan serves as a blueprint for continuous improvement. It centers around five goals that you see here. Information is organized in these five goals to provide an update to our community and to tell our story beyond test scores and benchmarks established by the state. Preparing students for life after graduation is a priority for the school system. The Graduation by Numbers page shows information from the class of 2018. On this page, through the use of infographics, we are able to share a large amount of information and data in an easy-to-read format. As you can imagine, Goal A, Student Achievement and Success, contains a very large amount of test score data, and we are able to display this in a concise and visually appealing manner through infographics. Students in St. Charles Parish Public Schools have a number of opportunities to be involved in academics, athletics, arts, and extracurricular activities. This page is an example of information on student participation that might not otherwise be known. There truly is something for everyone in St. Charles Parish Public Schools, and by these numbers, you can see that our students take advantage of these many offerings. Each page of the Quality Profile also includes a Did You Know section at the bottom. This space elaborates on information displayed in the infographics above that might need further explanation, and in some instances, it might also include additional information that is not displayed above in the infographic, but we felt was important to share and is of interest to our stakeholders. The Did You Know section, this Did You Know section on this page for safety and security explains the data shared in the infographics and then also mentions information on required safe schools training that all employees must complete. And after each goal, a moving forward page outlines action steps pertaining to that goal which the school system is most excited about for the future. We felt it was important that we include in the Quality Profile a way for our stakeholders to be informed on what the school system is focusing on as priorities in the coming The awards pages at the end includes those achievements by board members, students, employees, and our groups that are a significant accomplishment, unique, and set the school system apart from others. It is by no means all of the awards and accomplishments that we have achieved in the year. But as you can see here, we have a lot to be proud of in our AAA school district, having received awards in all three of these categories: academics, athletics, and the arts. And now that I've shared just a brief snapshot and some highlights of the Quality Profile, you're probably wondering how you can view the entire document yourself. All St. Charles Parish residents will receive a postcard in the mail announcing that the Quality Profile is now available online, and we chose to mail out those postcards. Those postcards will be mailed out next week instead of printing the actual document and mailing it in an order and an effort to be fiscally responsible. And while the printed copies are not yet available, you can view the Quality Profile on the district's website under the For Community section. And in order to ensure accessibility to everyone, if you are unable to view the document online, you can request a paper copy by contacting the Public Information Department at the number on the screen. And before I have any questions, I'd just like to thank my staff. They really do assist in putting together this Quality Profile, and I also want to thank the Board for their support in this publication and for recognizing the importance and the value of keeping our stakeholders informed. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cravetta. This is a very timely publication. As you know, the school labels will be coming out sometime in November, but this document, some of the terms that you shared with us in your presentation is that it's comprehensive, it's transparent, easy to navigate, easy to read, straightforward, and one letter does not tell who we are and how we achieve success for our students in this school system. This document, however, tells our story accurately and concisely, and it explains the full benefit of our educational system to our students. So thank you so much, Ms. Cravetta. Next, earlier in October, through the Battle on the River football game, the community came together to help raise awareness and funds for breast cancer research. The Satellite Center's Health Science Team members conducted its annual Pink Links for Breast Cancer Fundraiser. Students sold Pink Links with $1, with all proceeds going to the American Cancer Society. While the fundraiser was a competition, of course, between Hanville and Destrehan, our students joined the Pink Links together during halftime on the football field, and what a visual image that was. More than $17,300 was raised through this project. Students, under the direction of the facilitators Denise Robichaud and Renee Labott, demonstrated that St. Charles Parish will fight to help raise awareness for breast cancer, thanks to all who participated and helped make this project a success. And finally, a reminder, daylight saving time ends on November 4, so remember to set your clock back an hour. Mr. President, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Any further discussion?
Move adjourn?
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, nay. Stand adjourned.